Welcome, everyone, to the May 10th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here, everyone at home. I notice it's raining again. Hard again. The first item up for this evening is Committee Reports and Items of Interest. And so I think I heard that Mike's going to talk a little bit about the Fire and EMS Recruit Class, so I'll just say yes. You'll cover that, the awards, right?
For the police.
Yes. Although you didn't do that, then I'll mention it. So we had a Fire and EMS recruit class, recruit class number 12, I believe, and it was a special female class. And it was wonderful to go to their ceremony. I want to congratulate them. Then I want to thank staff for the Envision Eugene kickoff. Lots of people are weighing in, and that's good. And I think it comes back on our docket on May 24th where we continue that conversation here. And then we all probably heard that Boodoo Donuts is now present downtown, so that's fun.
Did you have a bacon donut yet?
No, I haven't had, but I've heard reports. They keep telling me it's really good. So then there was a grand opening for BCG that does LED lighting innovations, and so I went to that. And then they worked on Saturday morning in removing sod for the Bailey Hill Memorial over there for the young man who was killed on Bailey Hill Road, but for also some others who've been killed in bicycle accidents. We had National Train Day, and I want to thank Brenda Wilson, who works for the city. She put that entire event together, and had a pretty substantial turnout of people. Had an author, and Representative Nathanson was there. And we had some train folks there with their train sets, and lots of kids, and had a cake and plates for, I think, 60, and they were gone rather rapidly. So I think we had a, the whole notion of that was to keep our eyes on trying to focus on high-speed rail and trains for the state of Oregon. Then I went to Thai Dai and Tofu at the Lane County Historical Museum, and that's really fun. I'd recommend that to anybody. They did a great job. I wanted to, we had a question that, when is Street Assessment coming up? And I wanted to let you know that it's coming to council on July 14th. And then on, I see that on June 9th, the TASER policy makes its way to the council. And my last item for today is this weekend, on Saturday, the Wayne Morse Family Farm, where Senator Morse had his home, is having their annual open house from 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturday. And there'll be tours and nature walks and carriage rides and music, and a lot of information about his role in our community. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the chance to attend the Eugene Police Department Commendations and Awards Ceremony that was held on Wednesday, the 28th. And I really wish everybody had the chance to hear some of the stories that get told at that event. One of them was about an officer who was able to apprehend a suspect that had taken a 12-year-old girl hostage and was getting away, and would not likely have been a very good outcome for that little girl if not for the real bravery of this guy to stop him. There were other stories about people's lives being saved that were really, really moving. And I'd love to see us present, have that presentation on a larger scale or in a bigger forum where more people would have a chance to understand some of the work that our officers do. Also, I wanted to say thanks to Scott Luell for helping me with a constituent issue real, real quickly and real well. That was a big help to me, and I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Alan?
Just a couple announcements and meetings. MPC is this Thursday at the Eugene Library, 11:30 to 1:30. Fairmont Neighbors are meeting next week on Tuesday, the 18th, from 7:00 to 9:00 at Laurel Hill Valley Golf Course. That was the Fairmont Neighbors. Laurel Hill Valley Citizens on Thursday, the 20th.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was kind of busy. I went to California for a week, and that was always very eye-opening when I traveled down there. I went to a Healthy Living Conference put on by Naleo. Actually got a scholarship. I had to write an essay about why I needed to go.
And Naleo is?
National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. And so it was, it was pretty, it was pretty interesting. It's always good to get together with other people who have common, like, visions of life. And, but before I did that, I went to a couple of listening sessions. I went to, our neighborhood had a, an issue, and so we did a listening session. And I actually, Bob Chadwick and his partner came and helped, and so that was really good. It was, it was really pretty impactful. There's young people and elders in the community having issues and stuff. It's really interesting how we've used that model, John, so I just wanted to thank you for bringing that to us, because it's a template that makes sense to people, and it's a common language, and so it's been really useful for me. I attended a police listening session with the communities of color, and that was probably about, I don't know the numbers, but it was a big room. It was a Basken Tyson room at the library, and it was full. And that was three hours, and everybody, I think, got a lot out of it. It was, it was very good. I went to the TASER Forum, and people got to speak there, and so that was good. There was a lot of community input. And then this last Friday, we went to, I attended the Communities of Color First Friday. They go around to the different organizations. That's part of the memorandum of understanding the city's a part of. And they just network and visit. And the city held theirs this month, was their turn this year, and they did it in conjunction with 4J, so there was a lot of people there. A Rappa is tomorrow, and so I won't be able to talk about what we're doing there, but I did want to say that they, the air quality, the air toxic monitor is up and running at Peterson Barn. And we're actually planning an open house, or kind of, not really an open house, but a forum, on where people can express more of their concerns or talk about whatever they want to talk about, probably next month. And that'll be at Peterson Barn. I'll let you guys, not at Peterson Barn, at Red Cross. And I'll let you know what time and what day. We haven't quite settled on a day in time, so I think that was all. Oh, and I also want to say congratulations to the medics. This was a win-win that Chief Groves, they, we had cut the 90 Series out, which was the single-role medics, and these gals were, these women were a part of that group. And so they were allowed to train and test to become dual-role firefighters, paramedics. And I think four of them made it, and the other, and they're still working with one or two, one of them, and then another gal went into dispatch. And so I'm not quite sure how many folks were all in all, but I think that that's a real good way to keep our people employed.
It was great. Chris?
Yeah, a couple of things. I wanted to thank the mayor for going to the Bailey Hill Safety Plaza event on the 8th. It was really great. They were cutting sod and doing some heavy lifting, and they're going to pour some concrete, and it's going to be a really nice, nice project. Because I was at the Opportunity Conference, which was taking place on Saturday, and the Opportunity Conference is built around the work of Donna Beagle, who, as you know, works on poverty, situational poverty. And what she's done has created a system where you have folks in the community who are in poverty or close to poverty, or in difficult situations or challenging situations. And they match them up with folks who are moving around in society and have some contacts with folks and connections and can mentor and help these people in a way that isn't just a handout. It's really giving them the skills to be able to begin to take care of themselves. And in other places that it's done, it's really very successful. And so I think as a poverty and homelessness addressing strategy, it's very clever. And it doesn't require you to hand out a lot of money. It really requires you to just help people work on the brains that will get them to where they need to go. And so we started off getting matched up, and we'll see where it goes from there, but I think it could be a real pioneering project. So that's where I was. So thank you, Mayor, for doing.
Glad to do it. That sounds really interesting. George?
Well, I too went to the Fire EMS graduation ceremonies, and, you know, to, they do a slide presentation of the academy that all the firefighter EMS people go through. And for those women to undertake that is just phenomenal. I mean, it, I don't, didn't see any difference in the slides they showed when it was all male classes versus all female class. So these women are a special breed, and we should be very proud of them for just wanting to take this assignment on. And they did, they did a pretty good job, and some of the feats that they accomplished while they were going through the academy are just amazing. And I also went to the EPD Ceremony, Award Ceremony, and I agree with Mike, and I think at one time they were in a larger venue, but I think probably because of budget constraints, we've reduced it down to City Hall now. But if there's some way to share some of these experiences that these officers go through with the, with the rest of the public, and I think it would, you know, open quite a few eyes in this community. And it's not just the officers that were involved, it's just some of the common, ordinary citizens that step in and get involved. Also, we recognize in the interdepartment cooperation between our department and Sheriff's Office and other agencies is just, just amazing. What goes on out there on a day-to-day basis, 24 hours a day, that probably the average person doesn't even think about, because, you know, they get up to go to work, to come home, you know, have dinner, go start it all over again. So if there's some way we can get these stories out to more people, I think it would be a good idea.
George?
I went to a Human Rights Process Session, Human Rights Commission, and I went to a public hearing, Use of Tasers. That was hosted by the Use of Force Subcommittee. I also went to the Police Awards Ceremony, and there were some pretty inspiring stories there, citizens and also officers stepping up and doing the right thing. And also Saturday, went to the Community Counseling Center fundraiser. The mayor was there. Read a kind of a funny, she read a funny Molly Ivins piece. It was basically a comedy show, several different people, either single or duos, and finished off by live matinee.
Mm-hmm.
As a benefit for Community Counseling Center on Cobra Road. And that was, that was a great event.
Jennifer?
I just have one thing, and the Active Bethel Citizens are having a meeting in May, on Wednesday, May 26th, at 7:00 o'clock at Peterson Barn. John Reese is on the schedule. He'll be talking about our budget process, which ideally we'll have just concluded by then.
Eddie?
I was also at the Police Awards Ceremony in the City Council Chamber, and I actually thought it was a pretty good place to do it, because the place was overflowing, and it made it seem that there was, there was a lot of interest, and it was good, it's good to have it crowded instead of sparsely populated, I think. I went to the Envision Eugene, the first session, the Hilton. I don't know how that's going to turn out. I know some people were happy about it, and some weren't. The Art Walk is always as fun, it's Friday night, and some new, different galleries downtown. Some aren't there anymore, too. City Club was interesting. I think everybody might, I found it, and it was called Speed Dating the Candidates. All the candidates for county commission had just a minute or so to speak. And I don't think they, I don't know, they didn't enjoy the brevity, I don't think. Tomorrow night is Southeast Neighbors Meeting at the Hilliard Center. Unfortunately, I can't go, previous commitment, but it sounds very interesting. There's going to be a panel talking about that club. And I can't get my lawn mowed, because it keeps raining. That's my five-word.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I'll add is, the mayor and I had a chance to meet Roger Gray on Friday, the new UW general manager, and he will be here for council. I have a little introduction reception for him on June 16th at your work session. He seems like a very energetic, tall individual, and so we're happy to have him in town with us.
George, did you?
Yeah, I just have one other thing. The Harlem Neighborhood Association meeting is going, going to be held the day after the primary election, which is a, the meeting would be on the 19th, I believe it is. And for those people in the Harlem Neighborhood Association that want to come to the meeting, in any of the races where there is a runoff, they're going to invite the candidates, the remaining candidates, to come, and they're going to give them time to speak. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that. Thank you.
Just to add, a couple comments about the Envision Eugene. I think, as I read the, what we're going to be doing with that is, we'll be talking more about the community engagement process, I believe. And I just wanted to encourage all of you to find some time to participate in that. I think the first one, some people didn't probably understand that it was really just to get a bit of hearing about what people were thinking about for the future. It wasn't really meant for planning purposes, and it was really meant to just offer time for people to begin to talk about their visions for the community. It's just a very first little toe-in-the-door conversation, and there's much more to come. And we really do want people to be engaged and really think about what they want our community to be in the future. So we need to all be part of that. Alan?
I forgot. I had attended the Envision Eugene at the Hilton, the evening one at 7:00. And I wanted to compliment staff on the really good job that they did in presenting the material and making it really clear what was going on. Of course, I couldn't stay for the whole evening, but it was really well-attended. The earlier one actually had more people, so I think there was probably about 75 and 100 and something. So that was good turnout, yeah. And sat around big tables.
The only thing I would add to that is, the thing we all have to remember is, some people, especially those that have been sort of engaged in some email conversation about it, these are folks who've been engaged for years and years in processes in our community. So they're way in a different place than some other folks who are just coming in at the, this is their first venture in the door in the conversation. So we have people at all different stages, and so this is just a sort of a process to get, just get us sort of going together. And we all have to understand that we don't all come into this conversation in the same place, with, for some, it's Chapter 15 or 20, and for some, it's, 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 page one. So just, let's work together.
What's the next one?
The next, our, 26th.
June 23rd.
And then June 23rd. See? Thank you. We're so glad to have the reporter here.
Inform the media. It was a great report.
Mayor?
Yes.
So in the listening circles with the police department and the communities of color, that is really a good analogy, because I think that that's the same place. We have a really young force right now, and yet we have people who've been in the community for 20, 30 years. And so, you know, that's, I think, what's good about this process that you use, is that people are at different levels of knowledge and understanding and enlightenment around, you know, issues and how people feel. And so I think it's really good when we get that mix of people in the room and get them talking.
And just, whether it's in that conversation or in the Envision Eugene conversation, I mean, communities are an ongoing thing. They've been going on for a long, long time. They keep on going and going and going, so it's just evolutions.
Yeah, and it's good that there are young people and people who don't know, because the rest of us are going to be gone someday.
Right. Okay. Not that soon.
It's true. It's true.
Okay, ready for our, our next work session item, and that is our continuing work on the ordinance on downtown urban renewal plan amendment. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Amanda here in just a minute. Couple of quick things. In front of you, we put a proposed motion, and the reason why we've asked to do this, one, it's, it just gives us nice, clear direction. The council makes a affirmative statement as we move forward. We'll also talk a little bit about the Oversight Committee. As you'll note, we'll be making a suggested change to how we go about appointing that, and so this will give us clear direction for that also. And so just, that's why we have this here. It just helps us as we move towards the 24th.
So we'll do the presentation part of this, and then we'll put the motion on the table and let them discuss.
Yeah, that would be great from our perspective. Thank you. So tonight's work session is really on the feedback we've received from community members, Planning Commission, and other taxing bodies on our proposed downtown urban renewal amendment. And remember, the proposed amendment is targeted at specific projects that move us significantly toward our goal of a revitalized downtown and also boosts the economy. And together, they really have the goal of creating an active downtown center that feels safe, and also is to leverage public investment to inspire private investment and generate jobs. And so I'll ask Amanda to go through a presentation on the comments, and then turn it over to you, Mayor, and the council.
Good evening. So in March, you initiated the downtown urban renewal plan amendment process, and part of that process is getting comment from various stakeholders. And that feedback is the focus of tonight's work session. I'm going to do a quick recap of where we've been and the proposed amendment, and then I'll provide a summary of the comments that we received, and you'll have the rest of the work session for your discussion. About a year ago, you identified revitalizing downtown as a fundamental piece of a successful economy. This concept was reinforced with results from Eugene Counts and other public input. Last July, you had a work session on urban renewal, where you decided to start with downtown outcomes in August. From there, you defined strategies, projects, and tools. You reviewed public opinion from the telephone survey, open houses, and online surveys. And then in March, you started the urban renewal amendment process and held a public hearing in April. So let's review the main features of the proposed amendment. You've proposed to increase the spending limit by 16.15 million and expand the boundary to include the site for the Veterans Affairs Clinic Project. And that would improve the chances of getting the VA to select that site at 12th and Willamette. You've also asked to limit the plan to only allow four specific projects, that I'll cover in a moment. You'd have annual review of spending by the community members. And we propose that council select this panel. Lastly, the district would be ended when the projects are paid for, which is five to six years ahead of the sunset date included in the existing plan, estimated for fiscal year 2018, 2019. So your packet had the proposed plan and accompanying report with more detail, and it's also available online at vibranteugene.org. So I'll do a quick recap of the projects. The first project is the 10th and Charlton Development Site for LCC's new downtown campus. The proposed $8 million is a critical piece of Lane Community College's funding for the $35 million education building. We anticipate many returns on this investment, construction jobs and permanent jobs, and it's an opportunity to fill a major vacancy across from the library and in the heart of downtown. And includes the potential for an additional investment of $15 million to bring student housing downtown. The second project would be for Urban Renewal District to make additional contribution to the Broadway Place development. The urban renewal funds would be used to pay debt on the garages, and this would free up general fund dollars for public safety. The third project is infrastructure improvements to the park blocks along 8th Avenue to make that location more attractive and functional for the Lane County Farmers Market. And the fourth project is for the VA clinic. If the VA selects the site at 12th and Willamette, we would have $2.5 million available. And if they don't select that site, that $2.5 million would not be spent. So that's the background. Now let's review the comments. We solicited comments from three main groups, the taxing districts, the Planning Commission, and the public. We'll start with the schools. School District 4J, as you discussed at the April public hearing, agreed with the financial analysis that they would lose about $117,000 per year if the downtown district were to stop collecting tax increment funds. The board is scheduled to act next week on the superintendent's recommendation to support the plan amendment. Lane Education Service District didn't provide any comment, and Lane Community College spoke in support of the plan amendment at the public hearing last month. Lane County made two requests, oh, pardon me. First, they indicated their support for your focus on public projects, and then they made two requests. The first was to be held harmless, and they mentioned one possible method for doing this is to expand the boundary to include the Charlton Building and to make debt payments on that. Their second request was to require their concurrence for future plan changes. We reviewed, we reviewed the proposed amendment with Planning Commission at the end of March, and they recommended the proposed plan amendment as consistent with the city's land use policies. We did two main public outreach efforts. The first as part of the project review leading up to the plan amendment process. We did a telephone survey, the results of which you reviewed in September. We held two open houses in January. We did online surveys, and we met with the Sustainability Commission at the end of January. Then we did outreach as part of the plan amendment process. We provided public notice to Eugene property owners on March 19th. You held a public hearing on April 19th. And we had several meetings with the Eugene Redevelopment Advisory Committee and the Downtown Neighborhood Association. We compiled all of these comments for the plan amendment outreach in your packet, and we made them available in a hard copy at the city manager's office and in the atrium So that's the summary of comments, and now is your time to discuss those comments. If you want to make any changes, this would be the best time to do it, so we can incorporate those before you're scheduled to act on the ordinance on May 24th.
City Manager?
Just, I wanted to comment on the one change around the Oversight Committee. You might remember what we've been talking about up to this point would be similar to as we've had the bond, the street bond, which was appointed by myself, and of course, that report came back to you very recently. And this, that was our original proposal. The recommendation I am making now, based on a variety of public comment, is that that committee actually be appointed by the council. What the motion would do is, we would come back to you on the 24th with a proposal on how that process could work. And so it is a change from what we've been talking about before.
Thanks for that clarification. I'll put the motion on the table, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I move to direct the city manager to bring back on May 24th, A, the proposed ordinance, plan and report for final approval, and B, a proposal for how members would be chosen for the Oversight Committee called for by the UR Plan.
Second for discussion.
Boot and seconded. Okay, and I have, first up in the queue is Jennifer.
Thank you. Amanda, thank you for the presentation, and I just really think you guys have done a great job for outreach and being very transparent in this whole process, so congratulations. I just had two questions. One is on Slide 5, which is the proposed boundary for the VA clinic. And I was a little surprised to see the lot across the street from, that must be Olive, that must be Olive Street. There's a little L-shaped, can somebody go back to, a lot that I believe is currently empty right now. It's by the gymnastics academy. Right, okay, so I figured it was owned by Peace Health, but is it required for our application to the VA?
It is owned, it is owned by Peace Health, I believe. So it would be part of the space that the VA would be leasing, would be the idea, but the money wouldn't necessarily be spent on that site. The specifics for how you would spend it would be brought back to you for your approval.
Okay. Then on Page, Slide 7, the LCC conceptual drawing. Is the building on the left the library?
Mm-hmm.
And the one, the white building in the center? So is this a plaza that they've built in between the two that interrupts traffic?
Just for special occasions. It's just a drawing for the feasibility study.
What it would be is actually, yes, it would be for special occasions that they could actually block it off as a plaza. For everyday occurrence, it's still a drive, it's just like, it's a, it's a regular open street.
Okay, well, I'm, yeah, because I'm not interested at all in shutting off the streets, and so I'm not a little alarming.
So it doesn't do that.
Okay, that's, I'll just wait to hear some more questions, but that's it, Brian. Thanks.
Yeah, if we cut off, we'd cut off both the streets.
Andrea?
Hi. So I just wanted to verify that if the Farmers Market does not choose to stay there, because there's been talk of them doing something different, then that money would also not be spent on anything else.
George Poling?
That was it?
Yeah.
Oh. In reference to the slide that's currently up on the screen, I want to make it perfectly clear to everybody that that in no way represents what the final product's going to be. That was just kind of something that they just, a conceptual idea that they just put in there, just so we have an idea of the spacing and, you know, how it's going to be situated compared to the library, and everything's that correct.
Yeah. Denny, do you want to speak to that?
Why don't you show the picture, though?
Denny's the LCC project manager.
Yes, that's correct. This is part of the feasibility work that was done for the project. It's very detailed, however, and this is how they derive their cost estimate, and they have a detailed cost estimate. They are likely to do a next phase, which they would issue an RFP for the actual design. So this, you're correct, this is not the actual design.
And in some of the comments I was reading from the citizens, that there's the, there's the idea that LCC is not going to actually increase their capacity for students as far as classrooms concerned, but my understanding in talking with President Spilde and the presentation they've done is that it is, in fact, going to expand the capacity of students as well as bring downtown housing, which currently their old building is, is really not worth much to them. housing, which currently their old building is really not worth much to them at this point. So there is an absolute need for this. And also, as far as the boundary is concerned, I mean, even the Board of Commissioners haven't confused that the boundary will not expand if the VA does not choose to. Did you have a comment?
Seems to.
Anyway, my understanding was that if the VA does not choose that, that the boundary goes back to the original boundary, and that property is no longer included in the urban renewal district. Is that the way it goes?
We are hoping that eventually we can get there. We're still having conversations with Bond Council. At a minimum, what the council does have the authority to do is if the VA doesn't choose that site, you can, well, one, you can't spend the $2.5 million on maximum indebtedness because it's targeted just for that. And then, second, the council can choose not to receive any tax increment dollars from the expanded area. That we know you can do based on legislation that was recently passed that went into effect in January. What we're still exploring with Bond Council is whether we can set up the plan, and we'll know this before the 24th, whether we can set up the plan so that we have something in the plan that would not require you to go through a whole substantial amendment process that requires going to the Planning Commission, giving notice to every individual in the city, that would just allow the council or the agency to pass a resolution changing the plan to remove that area. That's the piece we're still trying to work out with Bond Council.
Because I, you know, that was one of the things, and I've said this before, when the original discussion on this was that the expansion and the raising of the debt limit was to be specific.
Yes.
Jobs or project specific, in that if this VA hospital doesn't come in, I don't want to see that expanded.
Right, and that's the intent, and there will be no money to spend in that part of the district, so there isn't anything to spend. And then, two, what we want to do is make it easy as possible for the agency, the board to say, that area's out of the plan. So that's what we're exploring to make that as easy as possible.
And one last thing, I guess I'll be the first to weigh in on the letters from the county commissioners. But I'm a little offended in point number two, fiscal impact. Here we go again, they're dangling the public safety carrot in front of everybody, you know? If you take this money away from us, it's going to cost us jail beds, it's going to cost us sheriff's deputies. I lived through that for 25 years with Lane County. You know, $180,000 to $200,000 per year, how many county commissioner aides will that hire? I mean, they seem to be finding money to hire themselves some additional help. Where did that come from? If they can find money to buy, to hire new assistants, they can find $180,000 to $200,000 to make up the difference.
That's it, brother.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, along those same lines here, Alan was just mentioning quietly to me there the idea of the concurrence part of this memo of our future decisions with regard to this district. I was wondering if we might get concurrence on some of their future decisions, like hiring assistants. But anyway, I thought their letter was really unfortunate, especially the veiled threat part. It probably isn't real conducive to us working well together, but I'm sure we'll work all of that out. One of the parts that I'm, I want to make perfectly clear here, though, you, I think, John, you've put, maybe I suppose I should say, please refresh my memory, didn't you put into a memo form the impact on 4J when we had the initial part of the conversation? And just for official review, that's going to cost 4J $100,000 if we shut down the district.
Right, our estimate is that, and they concur to net $117,000.
The reason I bring that up is because I had some communications from a number of school board members who had some concern, and I know that you mentioned it, the May 19th date, there was at least some discussion that they may hold that over and talk about that further. So I wanted to just make that exceptionally clear, that part right there, so that none of the school board members had any question about that part, and perhaps maybe even request that you forward to them the detailed memo that explains the calculation that we went through. If you haven't already.
We will, we'll forward them additional information that we haven't already forwarded them. We'd be happy to do that, yes.
Just wanted to make it perfectly clear so that nobody was confused that there is actually a negative impact on the schools to not do this.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. George Brown?
Yeah, I, this is so complex, I'm not even really sure where to start. So I think where a good place to start is kind of at the beginning, and I think, should we even be doing this? In our packet, there was testimony from two former councilors, Councilor Bettman-McCarney and Councilor Nicholson, and they questioned legality of this proposed plan amendment. And I do, too. I was wondering about it myself. As you may know, I've been, the last year, I've been, had my nose in ORS 457. And I think that we are actually in violation of it right now, specifically ORS 457.4502 and 3. So I'd like to ask, I need to ask staff a question, and I'm not sure who to direct this to.
Glenn, probably, if it's legal.
Well, all right, but I don't know if he'll know this. Whoever can answer this question? I'd like to know when we became aware that the debt had been paid on the downtown, on all the projects in the urban renewal district, or that we knew that we had enough money to pay the debt. Perhaps we hadn't actually made the payment to the library, our last payment, but we had enough money to retire that debt. Do we know when that was? My guess is probably at least a year ago.
I couldn't tell you a specific date, but certainly we've been working on this plan amendment for about a year, and so.
We can't hear you, Sue.
Sorry.
Better?
Just be speaker.
You'll have to speak up.
It's not a microphone, it's just a microphone.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, we've been working on this proposed plan amendment for about a year, and I can't tell you a specific date when we did the calculation that you're talking about, but we did certainly provide that information to the council in March, I think.
So nobody knows when the debt was paid, I mean, we know when the debt was paid off, but my question is, do we know when we had enough money to pay that debt? Because once we knew that, that's when we should have, by this statute, that's when we were supposed to inform the county tax assessor that we had enough money to pay off the debt. And shortly thereafter, return any monies left over from paying the debt off to the overlapping tax jurisdictions. That's what, that's what the statute says, and we didn't do that, and we have, still have not done it, and I believe that we're in violation of that statute. We talked about this before, and so I'm just wondering why we think we can proceed this
A couple-part answer, because as you point out, it's with the urban renewal statutes, it gets rather complicated. That particular statute changed as of January of this year. The statute says, said pretty much what, how you summarized it, but one of the things the statute does not say is what happens when a city is in the middle of an urban renewal plan process that would provide for additional spending authority. The statute was crafted before there was a concept of maximum indebtedness, and our urban renewal plan has more, more things in, currently, before this plan amendment, has more things in it than could be paid for by maximum indebtedness. And the statute essentially said, when you can pay for everything in your urban renewal plan, stop collecting. After that statute, long after that provision was adopted, then the concept of maximum indebtedness was added to the statute when Measure 47 and Measure 50 passed. And what the council did was, you could have spent this much money to carry out projects in the plan, but instead, you said, prior council said, we're only going to spend maximum of $33 million. Statute wasn't designed to deal with maximum indebtedness back then. We received, at some point, it sounds like in the last year, we received enough money to pay for up to our maximum indebtedness amount, but the statute still contemplated that you could amend the maximum indebtedness amount, allow additional spending, and you were in the middle of that process all of last year. And the statute doesn't say whether you have to give the notice if you're in the middle of the process. We have talked to Bond Council, we've talked to others about, okay, so what's the statute, how does statute apply in this circumstance? And the statute is simply unclear. The statute was amended last legislative session to take effect in January of this year to deal with, okay, well, if you have enough to actually meet maximum indebtedness, give notice. If the council doesn't amend the plan this fiscal year, then as part of the notice that the city gives to the county in July of every year, that's when we would give the county notice that, yep, we've achieved that level. And until the audit is done of the Urban Renewal Agency records, of the Urban Renewal Agency finances, which happens after the fiscal year, we couldn't say, here's the exact amount to give back to the county anyway. One other thing to mention, and I'm not sure, George, whether this is part of your issue, but it was certainly in some of the testimony, that you referenced, some believe that at the same time that the city, a city, would give notice that we've reached the, in essence, the amount that we need of tax increment, that not only does tax increment cease, but also that the plan terminates and the district terminates. In fact, the statute doesn't say that at all. I mean, the statute's very unclear about many things, but on this, the statute's very clear. The notice, the notification provision deals with tax increment, but the Urban Renewal Agency has the authority to spend other dollars, and as an example, the downtown revitalization loan program. Couple million dollars, I think, is what's currently in there. So even if tax increment ceases, the plan continues. So if we gave notice today, that doesn't mean you lack the authority to adopt the plan amendment. You still have the authority to adopt the plan amendment, because until you terminate it, the plan remains in effect. So we disagree with the conclusion that you reached. We understand the argument that you're making. The statute just doesn't contemplate this, and there haven't been any court cases to interpret that statute.
Did you all understand that? Did everyone understand it? Okay, well, it's, the statute, I look at it just 180 degrees opposite. I believe the statute's perfectly clear, and I mean, there's no ambiguity whatsoever. Yes, the attorney's right. It doesn't say, well, unless you're amending it, then you don't have to give the money back, or you don't have to notify the assessor. It doesn't say that. There are no conditions. There's absolutely no conditions, which I take to mean, when you have enough money to pay your obligations, that's when you inform the assessor to give the money back.
You have another round, George?
I need another round for the second violation.
Alan?
I specifically asked on this point, the city manager, if we were on good legal ground for moving forward, and I was assured that after the analysis that we were indeed on good legal ground, and that the city attorney had looked into that and that we were good to move forward. So that, that's why we have legal staff to do that kind of thing. Second question was, can you elaborate a little bit more on 4J's response so far? Other than, they just said the analysis that the assessor has done is correct, and that was it. And.
Sue, do you want to talk a little? You were at the meeting the other night.
So are you asking about the financial analysis or something else?
Well, what was their response to that analysis? That showed that if we eliminate the urban renewal district, the district will actually have to cut their costs by $117,000. If we keep the district, they don't.
Amanda, do you know, was that included in the packet, their response?
It wasn't included in the packet.
For them.
Although it may have been forwarded to you. Caroline.
Passerati.
Passerati did email and said that we concur with your conclusions. On an ongoing basis, the school district would lose approximately $117,000 in annual revenue, and on a one-time basis, the school district would receive an estimated $30,000 in revenue.
And Amanda, I think that the entire email correspondence was included in the notebook then?
It was in the public record binder.
Is that what you were thinking? Or? Yeah, I was just, I was asking for clarity. What are they going to do on the 19th?
What we have asked them to do is to actually consider a concurrence of the expanding the cap by approximately 17 million, to asking them to actually take some action.
Okay. The third point I wanted to make is, one citizen made the comment that you can use urban renewal funds, tax increment financing, to pay for capital projects, but the garage is an existing debt as opposed to a new debt, and therefore, it's not a capital project, and therefore, this is inappropriate use of tax increment financing. Can you respond to that, and whether or not you agree with that, Mr. Attorney?
If this was a project that had not yet been funded by urban renewal, so for example, if the city had debt on 858 Pearl, and we were proposing to use urban renewal to pay off the debt on 858 Pearl, even though 858 Pearl had never been an urban renewal project, I would agree with that. But this, the parking garage, the property was initially pulled together by the Urban Renewal Agency. The Urban Renewal Agency contributed, I think, in excess of $2 million already toward that project. So it's, it's a project that the agency has already supported, and this would be supporting it some more. And because it's a project that the agency has already been supporting, we think the agency can support it some more. If this were a completely new project, then I would agree with that conclusion.
Or something outside the urban renewal district, that would be inappropriate as well.
Right.
But, so given that factor, that this was an urban renewal project in the past, this makes it appropriate. Okay. I, too, found the irony in the letter from the Lane County Commissioners interesting that they would say that one of the issues with what we're doing is that it's taking money away from jail beds, when what we're doing with the money is buying jail beds and putting more cops in the street. So I thought that was a little confusing to me. Maybe, I'm sure we'll work this out somewhere or another, maybe the jail beds that we buy from this will come from Lane County, and we all end up in a similar place. And we've been a very good partner with them in the past. That swap that we did with them for $1 million so they could fund more public safety was a good example of where we've been over backwards to be more than a good partner for them to promote public safety, so. And if anybody's interested in why I support, or the mayor supports, this plan in Sunday's Register Guard was an op-ed piece that we authored about why we support this and why it's the most cost-effective and the best plan for us to move forward for revitalization of downtown. So that was in Sunday's Register Guard in the commentary section.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. It's intriguing, and I really do appreciate the work you've done. It's really been great, and I appreciate our discussion, which has tried in some ways to operate at the 30,000-foot do the right thing kind of level, and also dips down into the, let's do it the right way level. And so I appreciate, if there's legal questions, we need to have answers, and we need to know what those answers are, and we need to know what the dollars and cents are in terms of outcomes. But I inevitably will return to the 30,000-foot level, because I think that's where doing what's best for the community usually flies. And I think in this case, we should not lose sight of the fact that this could be in the community's best interest. I mean, we will, this is the best way, maybe not the only way, but I think it's the best way to achieve this downtown. It's the best way right now to provide public safety downtown in a meaningful way without increasing taxes, without having to increase the burden on the taxpayers, but take advantage of a mechanism that's in place. It's a way that we can provide some livability and quality of life enhancements with regard to a farmer's market, which I think is a wonderful thing, and it can be a destination. There is value beyond just what it may look like at a superficial level. And all of those other benefits we're talking about, plus, it has the added benefit of being something that we can, and I realize it's something we choose, but I'm not going to belabor a future council, but it's something we can sunset in a much shorter time than a bond if we choose to go with that. And so for all the reasons that were in the editorials, I agree. With regard to our interaction and relationship with our neighbors across the Friendship Bridge, they will do what they do, and we will do what we do. And I am confident that we will figure out a way to maintain a good working relationship with them, and we don't want to let these kinds of side things. with them, and we don't want to let these kinds of side things get in the way of that. We just need to keep our eye on the prize and keep moving forward, because I think we are a body, that I'm proud to say, can keep moving forward, because it knows what it wants to do. And that's a very good thing. So we shouldn't let ourselves get distracted. We should keep moving forward, because I think that's what we're best at right now.
Thank you. Chris, Betty?
I think we're moving in the wrong direction. And when you're moving in the wrong direction, you should turn around or stop, one or the other. Thanks, Chris, for giving me something to take off on. You always do that.
You're welcome.
Captain Metta, please. Mr. Segway.
I think, I think we should, I have several things to say. I think we should have been given all the comments. It's not enough to say they're in a book in the city manager's office, but I do want to point out some of them that haven't been mentioned. Everyone seems to be saying everyone is for this. From, and I'll tell you what page it was on the agenda, we did get a few of the negative comments. On page 143, "I urge you to terminate the district without extensions, expansions, or new projects," which is just what I think. "Then proceed to honestly evaluate the best use of municipal tax resources in a transparent manner." Another one, which was on page 148, someone, it says, "It seems to me the Urban Renewal District may have become a self-perpetuating bureaucracy." And it certainly has been, 42 years. I was interested in the, in the agenda, we had all these pictures and descriptions of the ones that are blighted. Urban renewal originally was supposed to cure blight, and also was supposed to terminate, eventually. I counted 38 properties that are identified as blight, and that's after 42 years of Urban renewal. I don't know how many years it would take to, and their current plans don't have anything to do with curing those blighted areas. I'm glad that the county finally spoke up. If they are so short of money, and money is being diverted that they could get, I think they should speak up and say, "We want the money that we could get." As for this free stuff, I don't understand where people think the money's coming from. If they, "It doesn't cost anything," you keep saying. It's tax money. It has to cost something. Somewhere, somehow. I personally am exposed to any extension of the time, to any increase in the debt limit, any expansion of the area. If the people want it, if it's good for the community, and the community thinks it's good, then let's let them vote on it. If the, if the public votes to say they want to expand the boundary, increase the debt limit, and increase and extend the time, then I'm fine with it. I might not agree with it, but I certainly would go along with it, if they want to. If, and I think I'm going to need another seven seconds, I'll just take a second round.
Okay. I'll just make a comment that, I think, around this table, we'll talk about all this, but at the end, we'll just have an honest difference of opinion here, and that is part of policymaking, and that's part of specific discussion. And it's, so I appreciate all points of view on this. I guess I would point out that in some of the, by the way, Betty, there is a huge amount of all the emails and everything in here that we've received, right in here. And I think some of those point out to what a lot of people consider to be blight in a certain part of our downtown, which is what we're trying to deal with right now. There are some folks that wrote to us that don't think downtown is worth working on, or don't want to see anything worked on until we solve some problems before we resolve others. But from my perspective, I think we would be abrogating our duty if we didn't really try our utmost to move forward on all those fronts that we talked about. Economic invigoration, filling a big pit that's been now there for all these many years, and frankly, dealing with some of our public safety issues as well. All of those things are public, in the public domain, trying to accomplish the kind of downtown that we all want to go down and join with each other in participating in. So I, I realize it's difficult, but this is money that's, you're right, it isn't free. It's been kind of carefully stowed away in the district to try to use it for these kinds of purposes. So I've got in a second round, George Brown, and then Alan, and Betty. George?
Thank you. So I believe that we already are in violation of ORS 457. Now, we're about ready to violate another segment of that statute, specifically 457.170. This segment describes the Urban Renewal Agency's powers in planning and undertaking an urban renewal project, what's allowable. I believe it would be violating this if we go ahead with this plan to pay off the debt on the roadway parking garage, and then use the money that's freed up to hire more police officers for downtown, increase the police department budget by $700,000. There's nothing here, in this segment of the statute, that says you can use TIFs and convert them into general fund dollars. This, the Urban Renewal Agency exists to assemble property, to assemble buildings, to tear down unsuitable, unsafe structures, to build new ones, to assist, either by themselves or with public-private partnership with a developer. There's nothing in here whatsoever that says it's to pay off debt on a pre-existing urban renewal project. And the attorney has said that, in answer to Alan's question, there's, there's no, there again, it's really clear what's allowed, and by definition, what's not allowed. If it's not in this list, it's not, it's, I mean, it doesn't say, just because it doesn't say, "You can't take the TIF funds down to Las Vegas and try to increase them by 100 times," that doesn't mean that it's okay. You can do that. Just because it doesn't say you can't spend them on a parking garage to pay off the debt of a parking garage and hire police officers, it doesn't mean you can do it. It's not in here. It's really clear. It's just, "Assist in relocating persons, dispose of any property or part thereof, carry out plans for a program of voluntary repair and rehabilitation of buildings, to install, construct, or reconstruct streets, utilities, site improvements, acquire real property by condemnation if necessary, carry out any rehabilitation or conservation work in an urban renewal area." This doesn't do that. It would increase public safety, and that'd be great, but we have other ways we can do that. If we let this whole thing go away, we can do that. We get $800,000 a year into the general fund. That's how much is being withheld by the downtown Urban Renewal District. We can hire police officers, rent jail beds, have money left over for homelessness and hunger. So this isn't legal. Now, who's going to sue the city? Well, I'm certainly not going to. I don't have those kind of funds. And I have no fiduciary interest in suing the city, but someone like the county sure could, because we're taking 200K from them every year. Guess I'd like one more.
Okay. Alan? Did you have anything you wanted to? Alan?
So we did get, like, about an inch of public comment and other reports about this topic, and it was overwhelming. And the, and so, what we get here is, we get four great projects downtown, and we get jobs downtown. And we can do that without raising taxes. We can do that without hurting 4J schools, and we can, and the financing mechanism that we have chosen, the Urban Renewal, is by far the cheapest option of the ones we looked at. We looked at urban renewal, existing revenues, GO bond, and a tax levy. The urban renewal mechanism is $3 million less than the next cheapest option, which is the existing resources option. An existing resources option, also, which the proponents are suggesting that we use, also requires us to cut $500,000 out of the general fund. That's libraries and parks and recreation programs. And it's not only a bad choice, it's just, it's, it doesn't make sense to me. Just because people don't like this funding mechanism, we should, we should spend more money and increase people's taxes. So the opponent's plan would cost more, hurt schools by $117,000 a year, and cuts to programs from the general fund, and simply, I don't get it. I think we need to be really clear here. We don't get unlimited do-overs downtown. If we blow it here again, we're going to be set back, and downtown is going to suffer yet again, and it's going to be years before we get anywhere. This is a very good plan. It's very well thought out. It's the most cost-effective way to do it. It doesn't hurt schools, and it won't raise your taxes one penny, and that's why I support this.
Betty?
Downtown suffers because of the opposite of urban renewal. Why is it in such bad shape after 42 years of urban renewal? The question is, why, if this is good for the community, I don't understand why people wouldn't want to let people vote on it. They vote for it? I understand everyone wants to fill that pit. We could do that with existing resources, and I don't know what Alan is talking about, about it would cost more. We have, how much money do we have in the facility reserve?
22 million.
I think that would be more than enough, if that's existing resources. And it would not cost us anything to take money out of that for LCC, would it? How could it?
That money sits in the facility reserve, that's correct.
We have a target burden. And it wouldn't cost us anything to move it. So we could use existing funds. I understand there is some urgency about the LCC, that we might not have time to wait for a vote, because they need some assurance that they can start, that they can proceed. But we could use existing funds for that. Then we could let the public vote on whether they want to continue urban renewal for other projects, which aren't really projects yet, that the Vets Administration and Peace Health will decide, or the Vets, I mean, the public, the federal government and Peace Health will decide where. As for the farmer's market, it's rather vague, what would be done there. But still, it could wait while we wait for a vote. And what's the other thing, oh, the police? That's, actually, we can do whatever we want with the facility reserve, but it should be up to the public to vote. And I would like to know how much it costs to do the survey of all the, all the buildings, ages of every property, and whether it's blighted or not, the pictures and the examination. How much does that cost?
It was completed by staff, so I don't know the amount of staff hours that were put into that.
Must have been a lot.
I don't.
And would that be paid by the Urban Renewal District, or by the general funds?
It was urban renewal.
Well, that is part of urban renewal administrative cost, right?
Yes.
Because that must have been rather costly. And as for this threat of cutting the library, would that come from using existing funds to help LCC? How could it?
I think it depends on what fund you choose to use.
But not if we use the facility reserve, except?
If you chose to use facility reserves exclusively to fund the LCC, then that would, I would presume that that would not impact the library.
Okay, thanks. Mike?
There's, as I've said at this table many times, I'm not a big fan of how our city has used tax increment financing in the past. I'm not a big fan of urban renewal, the way we've used it. But I think we need, there are a number of parts of this plan that have concerns in different bodies in different places. The county does, other people do, and that's okay. Because in Eugene, we very rarely get to a unanimous opinion on nearly anything, and so a plan that has a few detractors here and there is probably okay. This particular one is not perfect for anybody, but I think that makes it the best option for everybody. There are parts of this that do accomplish things that are worth swallowing the parts I disagree with. I quite literally have been pounding the table about downtown public safety for several years. I think the first video I posted to my Facebook page, the TV camera, actually, you could hear me actually pounding on the table about the issue. So I'm happy that we're going to finally address that in a meaningful way. There are parts of this that are important, and we had a very thorough process with Eugene Councils to listen to the community, and it identified the parts, some of which, again, we've been talking about for years, in terms of public safety downtown, and the other issues that were very keenly identified in that. And I think this plan does a good job of addressing each of those. Again, it's not perfect, and there are some points of disagreement, but I've been really pleased to see so many people from different sides of the political spectrum give their input, that let's finally move forward with something. And I like the idea, so I'm going to support this.
Chris?
Thank you. I want to actually play off the fact that not a lot has happened in 30 or 40 years. And I think a lot of the reason for that is because we've never had an idea that we were able to get behind. Whether it was because of urban renewal funding, or any other project, I mean, one of the, one of the things that has held us up as a community is the fact we can never find something we can all get behind, because we keep searching for the perfect solution, and somebody doesn't lie. We've also not been positioned to be able to find consensus, and to be able to move forward with something. I am of the belief that, right now, here in this place, at this time, we are positioned to finally move forward and do something that I think, and I agree, other people don't like it, and I, that's fine, but I think we, as a community, are in the unique place where we haven't been for a very long time, to be able to move forward. And I agree with Mike. Maybe it's not perfect. It has its flaws, and there's some issues we will need to deal with, but I think it can do good. I think it can be great. We can pull one-time money and try to fill gaps with it. The facility reserve was intended to be a Eugene facility reserve, and we have facilities in Eugene for which that reserve needs to be spent. And we've articulated what a lot of those are. So it's not a facility reserve for anybody's facilities. It's for our facilities, and we have enough facility, facility needs to use that. Particularly when there's another source that we can use, and it's a source that's already there. I am encouraged, even as I understand that some folks are discouraged, and I hear that, but I am encouraged by the fact that, for the first time, maybe in 40 years, we could actually move forward with something good. In my estimation, it's good. And that's, that's two things. A project that I like, and the fact that we're able to do it, is, to me, significant. And maybe we can get off the dime after all these decades and actually make something happen.
Well, I just, we've done a few over those years.
A few. But that doesn't make my point.
No. I appreciate the point that you made, and the intended use of the resources. I appreciate that as well. And I guess I just want to make one more point that I don't have to make, but I want to make it, and that is, when we hire legal staff, we hire them to give us their best legal advice, and their job is to try to give us legal advice that will keep us out of trouble. So I don't think that our legal staff is trying to give us advice that he thinks is going to lead us down a path to getting in trouble with the, with the law in any way. I think it's just the opposite. And so we have to rely on the person that we pay, and the staff that we pay, to give us the best legal advice that they can give us, with the expertise that they've gained over a number of years on this topic. And so I just, I feel, I felt like I have to say that this isn't a matter of, it seems important that we sort of recognize that these are the people we hire to ask these very questions of, and the best advice that we're giving is, we get, is, there are certainly some areas where the law has not been fully established, but we are certainly not doing anything that is against the law in this process. At least, that's the judgment that we have from our legal staff, that is known for being one of the best city legal staffs in the state. So I just wanted to put that out there. George, your next round.
Thank you. I guess this is more for the people that are watching on TV. We were presented with four choices, funding choices. A very constrained existing resource choice, out of many, many choices. There were many other choices for our existing resources. We were presented with one to discuss. We were presented with a levy, and with a GO bond, and of course-
We were presented with a levy and with a GO bond, and of course, the best solution, according to staff, was urban renewal. Surprise, surprise. So, we had four choices. Now, there's many other, we didn't examine a revenue bond option, which wouldn't raise taxes and wouldn't require a vote either. It's $800,000 a year that would go to the general fund that could pay for a revenue bond. There are many other choices for the use of existing resources, too. So, I just want to let you know that we, we actually had only four choices out of, out of many other possible choices. Uh, I'm really getting kind of tired of hearing that urban renewal doesn't hurt schools. I, I had a phone conversation with John Phillips, the Department of Revenue in Salem. He's one of the top guys. I had email with Brian Reader, Assistant Superintendent of Analysis and Reporting in the Department of Education. The conclusion of both of them is, yes, in fact, schools are not made whole, in spite of the state's best efforts. The schools are not made whole, and the system suffers a loss. There's a net loss to the whole system of Oregon finances, and specifically in the Department of Education. And who suffers? Every single school in Oregon. Everyone. The money comes from, remember the, uh, two and a half years ago, when we had the last urban renewal amendment change, the attempt to, to increase the borrowing capacity, which failed pretty poorly at the polls? It was estimated then that it was approximately $465 per student. Every student in the state of Oregon loses that much funding because of all of the urban renewal districts. So, I guess the attitude here is, well, hey, they're doing it in Portland and other places. We better keep doing it. And it's okay that it costs every student that much money. So, I mean, the, the schools are not made whole. I have that from two knowledgeable people in Salem.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that one of the options for the existing resources option had a revenue bond as a part of that, of a $7 million revenue bond. So, that actually was accounted for...
$200,000.
Right, paid for by the dollars that would go back into the city general fund. So, that act, that was a part of an option.
I guess I would just add to that, that, uh, any of us sitting around the table could have brought up any option that we wanted to direct staff to pursue. If there were enough people who wanted to pursue a particular option, they would have done it for us. That's our direction, came from our direction. Okay. Georgia, did you want it another round?
Yeah, I, I kind of like the idea of, I mean, we could, I'd like to go back to Lane County just for a minute. And I agree, their letter to us was kind of full of some, in my view, misconceptions of, of, you know, being held harmless by us. But we could do that. We could do that, and it wouldn't, I mean, Lane County is, is probably one of the most distressed county organizations in the whole United States, and they're really hurt. And we take $200,000 from them every year, whether Riverfront Urban Renewal District is 40K, and downtown is 160K. And, you know, to us in our budget, that doesn't sound like that much. What's 200K? Well, to them, it's a lot of money. And, you know, we can talk, we can make fun of them, say, well, they want to use it for their personal assistance or whatever. They, in reality, they can use it for whatever they want. It's their money that we're withholding from them. And I'm telling you, this plan would have a lot. I'm opposed to this plan, but this plan would be much more popular with the voting populace if we did find a way to make Lane County harmless. And the only way I can think of doing it is, is like eliminating maybe the two and a half million dollar segment for, um, the peace health thing, which, let's face it, we have maybe a 20% chance of landing peace health if we're, probably not even that. That, that one is, is pure speculation. That one is just like aspirational fantasy. I just don't see, we don't have any, any real say in that. This is between the GSA and peace health. So, I, you know, if, I'm just saying that it'd be great if, because of their unusual, poverty really, it'd be great if we could, we could make Lane County whole if we really wanted to. We could direct that 200K to them if we modified this plan a little bit. And I'd like to see that happen. I know it's late in the game, but part of the letter made sense to me. They, they are really hurting, and they need every penny they can get their hands on. This would be a way to do it. Thanks.
Mayor, I just want to clarify again, the FY10 amount that the county would have received or would have received out of the downtown urban renewal district was $150,000. So...
Okay. Well, excuse me, I got 40 seconds, one second left. Uh, I see different figures almost every meeting. Like, for instance, the, the amount for, for this amend, amendment is, fluctuates since last summer. It's fluctuated between 8 million and 20 million. So, um, we hear, I ask, I ask how much is left, I or someone else asks how much is left in the, in the downtown urban renewal general fund. I hear $3.5 million one week, $4.5 million the next. So, then, thank you for correcting me, but the figures do change from week to week sometimes.
Alan?
Well, I'm reading the letter from the County Board of Commissioners. It says, "In the first year, 2010-11, the estimate is $150,000." So, I'll take their word for it. I guess it's a matter of who do you hold harmless? If we eliminate, if we hold them harmless for $150,000, then, and we eliminate the urban renewal district, then the school district's out $117,000. So, 150 minus 117, $33,000 difference. And we're going to hold somebody harmless. Uh, I'd rather hold the schools harmless and not hurt them than I would Lane County. Those are really our two, two options here. Um, I'm kind of surprised at the notion of turning the City of Eugene facility reserve to work on our facilities, like this city hall and a new police patrol facility, into the LCC facility reserve. That, that seems, um, inappropriate to me. And as far as, uh, the way Measure 550 and 47 work is so screwy. I voted against it and would vote to repeal it, but, uh, the, the way that it works, it actually ends up hurting 4J on a, at $117,000 a year. The rest of that money goes back to the state. So, uh, proponents are suggesting that we should help Lake Oswego schools get better so that we, instead of having these four projects downtown, and that logic doesn't really, um, hold for me. So, again, you know, this pro, this urban renewal district, and we did look at the revenue bond, George, is, um, doesn't raise your taxes one cent, it doesn't hurt 4J school, and it gets us these four great projects potentially. And, um, I think that's the vision that we've been lacking for a while to, to get us there with a mechanism that makes sense. So, that's why I support this project.
Eddie?
Um, I would like to know what's the objection to putting this on the ballot? I'm asking out of staff.
Well, I think it's a council decision, so I think it's a council policy decision.
You would be all right with putting it on the ballot?
It's not up to you.
It's really not up to me whether you choose to...
But he's the one who made the recommendations that we do these things, that's why.
Mike?
I think it's important, too, to keep in mind as a part of this discussion, some of the issues around what county government has to deal with have been kind of framed as the interests of the county versus the interests of the city. And I think that's kind of an unfortunate frame, because I, I think if, if we're looking at this from the broadest overall good, having a revitalized LCC campus downtown is going to serve more than just the citizens of Eugene. It's going to serve the people of Lane County. Having a safe downtown for people who come and do business at the county is going to be in, uh, something of broader interest than to just the city of Eugene. And certainly, if we're able to land a veterans hospital in downtown Eugene, it's going to serve veterans region-wide, and we just had 800 of them return, and we owe them the, the duty, the, the service to treat them well and to take care of them when they've returned to our community. So, it's, it's something that's going to, and certainly, the farmers market draws people from all over the county. So, this is something that isn't just about the city of Eugene. It's a county-wide and even wider, in some cases, good that is created from what we're doing downtown. So, I, I, I think it's important for us to keep that broader perspective in mind.
And I would just add to that, um, that we're all acutely aware of the financial situation the county finds itself in, because it affects us in our city profoundly. And we have, uh, every time they have wanted to do something, we have tried to be, um, good partners with them over that. The public safety is one, but that's certainly from the human service perspective and every, every, you know, dozens and dozens of ways. And every time they've tried to come up with some creative way to deal with their problem, we've been trying to cooperate and help them. So, we certainly understand that we're all in this together. I don't think the, uh, letter that we got was particularly helpful to this, but, um, but I, I think that we all understand that we, we live in this county, we're a city in this county, and their problem affects us, and so we do care deeply about it. Chris?
Yeah, in fact, I, I want to build on what both you and what George was saying. I agree, the county is in a desperate financial shape. They, they really, and, and much of that is not of their doing. I mean, they have lost a lot of money that they had no control over. Um, and so, the choices they make with what money they have are their choices, and I wouldn't want them second-guessing me any more than I second-guess them. And, and I don't want it to derail this, because this is important. But I do agree, if there are ways that we can work with the county to figure out how to, in ways we have before, make them whole to the degree we can. I'm absolutely supportive of that. They are our colleagues. They are our people across the bridge, and we should do what we can to help, because they benefit the, the citizens as much as we do, and they are the same citizens, interestingly enough. So, if there's something we can do, I think we should absolutely try to do it and come back with creative ideas, if we, if we can do that, but not at the expense of, of something else. And as to the notion of, uh, placing this on the ballot, the city council deals with many, many, many financial issues. We deal with financial issues all the time. Every year, we deal with a budget of half a billion dollars. We don't put that on the ballot. There's many other issues that, that we have been elected to represent, to be informed about, and then to make the decision. There are some that should be, and, but we can't put every single one. So, there's many financial issues that, um, we, we just deal with, we have to deal with. And if the citizens want to have a second thought about that, they have the right to do that through the initiative process. They absolutely can do that, and I support the initiative process. We didn't put the Beverly or the Green property up to vote, and those involve condemnations and millions of dollars, and so the same argument could hold true with those as well. So, they're just two examples of many, many, many financial issues that we, we try to do the best we can to deal with them, but the public always has the opportunity through initiative to change our minds if they are of a mind to. So, I think we're moving along. If we can help the county, if there's a realistic and viable way to do that, I'm absolutely supportive of it. I know they're in a tough shape, and, and if we can help, we should, but not at the expense of these, these projects.
And I would just add to that, that, um, I think that, that is not come under the rubric of keeping whole. I think it's keeping the partnership going to solve our mutual, um, problems, and we did that before this came along, and we'll do that after this comes along. So, um, that's in our interest and in their interest. George, you're, you're next for your fourth round, and then we'll see if we ready to vote.
I've heard several times, you know, throughout all these discussions, that the plan that we're dead-set on embarking on is, will not raise taxes, but the reverse is true. If we didn't do this plan, everybody's taxes would go down. Everybody in Eugene, everyone that pays this will pay this, not just people downtown in the district. It's citywide. So, if this, if it didn't happen, your taxes would go down. And then I just have one more question. Oh, listen, in, in response to, like, letting people vote, on page 157, it's kind of neat. Back in the old days of 1990, and through the 90s and early 2000s, people voted on urban renewal stuff all the time, and they approved it. 1990, they approved an updated plan that encouraged the smaller-scale commercial mixed-use projects. This is in our packet tonight. The library, uh, public advisory vote. Mall was dismantled in two or three different segments, all with voter approval. In 2001, that was the last one, finally, of the finally opening up the mall in 2001. That's only nine years ago. That's, that was, that's how people, that's how we got to consensus. The city went to people with a sensible plan. Everyone looked at it, and they went, yeah, I can live with that. I'll approve that. Yeah, it's going to cost some money. I'll approve that. So, I mean, that's, I think that's the best way to cons, get consensus, is come before the voters. Best shot. Other side. Also, my last question is, um, an update on the plan to buy the current building of LCC. As I see on page 23 of the downtown urban renewal plan, the amended plan, it says, "Agency may acquire the existing LCC downtown center property, the 1059 Melama." Went through some of us who were kind of, that wasn't a very good idea.
Yeah, the direction, the most recent direction from the council is that we were not pursuing the acquiring that property. So, we are not pursuing acquiring that property.
Okay. But I'm just, then I'm wondering, it makes me wonder why it's, why it's mentioned in the plan. Not going to do that. Why have it on page 23, that the agency may...
I'll, I'll have to take a look at that. Our intent is not to pursue it.
I think we have an answer maybe here.
The draft plan was written in the middle of February, prior to your direction. At this time, we can take that sentence out or that clause out if, if that's the desire of the council.
Okay, well, this is in, this is in tonight's, I mean, the parent and charity...
Right, and the plan was drafted in the middle of February, provided to you in advance of the March 8th meeting.
When it gets to us. Well, yeah, let's take it out. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Do you want to, uh, it's on the table?
Already on the table.
All right. So, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition, two. It passes, and Andrew expressed her support as well. That concludes our business of, of the work session. We'll see you at 7:30.
We'll be right.